Go. It's a, you know, a little bit after six. Okay, and Kevin, we're good. All right, thank you. I will call to order this meeting of the Westland City Council. It is Monday, June 16th, 2025. And we're going to, first item is to approve the agenda, and we're going to move the lifesaving award to the forefront of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the June 16th special meeting of the Westland City Council, moving item number six to number three, so that we can get our police officers out and available for calls.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, removing item six to, up to item number three on the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Please welcome back Kathy.
Thank you. Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Ben Stasky?
Yes. Okay, so with that change, that will take us right to the lifesaving award, if we're ready. So we can welcome up Chief Peter Mahuna and Officer Charles Lincoln. And we'll take a picture afterwards, if you'd like.
Mayor, Council President, also thanks for having me again here tonight. It is always one of the best parts of my job when I get to recognize the great work of the men and women from the Western Police Department. Here's another example of, of that fine work. Sir Lincoln, you were being awarded the Western Police Department lifesaving award due to your swift and exemplary actions on April 4th, 2025. On this date, at 11:19 PM, you and Officer Crosby responded to a welfare check in which the caller reported an unknown male appeared to be unconscious on the stairs near their apartment. A description of the male and his general location was provided. You arrived and searched the apartment complex's grounds. You located the male who was lying unconscious at the top of a set of stairs. He was unresponsive to multiple attempts to wake him, and you requested for medical personnel to respond to the scene. Even without any initial obvious evidence of substance abuse, you thought of the possibility this might be an overdose situation. And you were correct. Without hesitation, you retrieved your Narcan and administered one dose. The male was revived by this action, breathing in deeply and sitting up just moments after it took into effect. Dalton Valley Fire and Rescue and AMR assessed him, and he was transported to an area hospital where he ultimately admitted to ingesting fentanyl. Your rapid response and assessment of the situation directly contributed to this person's survival. Your actions are in keeping with the core values and the highest traditions of the Western Police Department and our profession. Thank you, Peter Mahuna.
Chief.
There's your lifesaving pin.
Thank you.
And your, your award. Photo op.
Basic. Soldiers.
Counsel also?
Yeah, getting up ready, counsel.
It's a tradition.
I'm sure we'll be on.
Let's go. You don't have them to look at.
I'm just, we don't really, well.
Counsel, can I get you just because we don't have one of just you? I'm sorry. It is like, I mean, like literally, I don't have any, just counsel. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. It was not the best. I just thought it would be easiest.
Thank you.
Wait, there's a. Thank you. Wait. Just so we're outside, like. You could have anybody else.
Chief.
Or. Okay.
Yeah, friends, eager, maybe, then bow like they. Good. Okay. I would have sounded like this before.
Stay.
Yeah. Luckily, no one died.
Well, it's always a great tradition to give out those lifesaving awards. One of the, my favorite parts of our council meetings. So thank you. Onto public comment, if we have any tonight.
There are none.
Okay. And now onto mayor and council reports. Which. Oh, your badge is right here. There you go. Mayor and council reports, reports from community advisory groups. Any reports? Last couple of weeks, Counselor Bright.
Just wanted to say that as representatives of South Fork Water Board, the mayor and the council president and I were in Denver for the American Waterworks Association Conference. And for anybody that maybe isn't completely aware, South Fork Water Board is the water district that's owned by the city of Westland and Oregon City. And they provide all of our clean drinking water. And the conference was very good. We, I was able to take away things that I think are beneficial to the city directly, as well as to the South Fork Water Board.
Thank you, counselor. And I enjoyed attending the project delivery class on Sunday with you at the conference. And that was very beneficial to me as well. We're going to share what we learned with our staff. Counselor President Baumgartner, any reports, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can report that in addition to last week attending the American Waterworks Association Conference, prior to that, I had a very successful trip to the Yakima Nation for a treaty celebration and participated in their parade as a member of the Willamette Falls Trust Board. And I was able to preview my lamprey costume that I will also be wearing or sharing with someone else at the Lamprey Festival next week at Clackamet Park. I'll talk more about later. And then this morning, we had the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition Monthly Meeting, as well as three o'clock this afternoon, we had a Zoom call for the Willamette Falls Trust. And we're eagerly awaiting the potential funding and moving forward with that project of public access at the falls. And that is all.
Thank you, Counsel President, Counselor Groner.
Yes, I look forward to seeing the lamprey costume. No, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Counselor Bonnington, anything?
Yeah. So last Wednesday, the 11th, I put down to Salem for an LOC mastering media training, which was really pretty interesting and well taught. And I made some, some new friends with our peers. Met the new chief of SCAPHUS, who is pretty young. And it was nice to see. And then Thursday was the Parks Board meeting. And reminder that the Old Time Fair is coming up. It's not too far away. So got a little preview of what's going on there. And then some of the interesting technology they're using to track park visits. It's pretty interesting stuff, so I think we'll see that soon.
Sweet. Thank you for that report.
Speaking of privacy.
And next, we also have some, a couple of appointments to make. So I will place before the council appointing Kristi Lons to the Economic Development Committee and Lynn Chikoin to the Utility Advisory Board. Sorry if I butchered that name, Lynn.
I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Kristi Lons to the Economic Development Committee and Lynn Chikoin to the Utility Advisory Board. Discussion on the appointments or? Okay, seeing none, you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Ben Stasky?
Yes. Thank you. Counselor President has a comment.
I just wanted to recognize the excellent quality of volunteers that we continue to get for our citizen advisory group appointments. And it's very gratifying to have volunteers from our community serve the, the community like that. So thank you to all who apply.
Thank you, Counsel President. Appreciate that and agree wholeheartedly. Next on the agenda is the LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation, and that will be read by Counselor Groner. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas our nation was founded upon and is guided by principles that include the belief that all people are created equal and that each person has an inherent right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded full recognition and protection under the law. Whereas the city of Westland is committed to being a safe, welcoming, and equitable community for all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, age, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, country of origin, disability, or any other identity. And whereas the month of June was chosen to honor the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City on June 27th, 1969, a pivotal moment in the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus civil rights movement. And whereas the ongoing pursuit of justice and equality for LGBTQ plus individuals is carried forward by courageous advocates, allies, families, who continue to push for a more inclusive and compassionate society. And whereas Pride Month offered, offers an opportunity to reflect on the history and the progress of the LGBT plus community and to celebrate their countless contributions to culture, civic life, and public service, and to renew our commitment to the work ahead to ensure safety, dignity, and belonging for all. And whereas the city of Westland affirms this commitment by flying the pride flag at city buildings throughout the month of June as a visible and meaningful sign of solidarity with the LGBTQ plus community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Westland that June 25th, 2025 is LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you for that, counselor. I look forward to signing the proclamation. On, moving on to the consent agenda, which has some meeting notes from May 12th on it. Any objection to the notes or any changes? Just have, there's, otherwise, if, if there are, you have to pull them off the consent agenda. That's why I always ask that. So seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 16th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, which includes May 12th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the, which includes the May 12th, 2025 meeting minutes, the city council meeting. Please call the roll.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Ben Stasky?
Yes. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Kathy, thank you for your work getting those minutes to us. Onto the business meeting. Addendum item eight. And we've got three items on there. The first is a series of ordinances related to parking. This is Agenda Bill 2025-06-1602, the proposal to amend three sections of the Westland Municipal Code, Chapter Six. And we've got ordinance 1760, 1761, and 1762, all which do separate and distinct things that we're going to learn about in just a moment. And this is a topic we've already talked about in the recent work session.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that work session was May 19th. I just looked it up. And since then, staff have been working to perfect the ordinance and follow your direction at the work session. So we have one staff report, but three different ordinances on three different topics. Chief Mahuna is here to remind us of each of them and why we're here. Well, I'll say why we're here. Why we're here is because many of these changes were requested by members of our community after identifying problems out there. So you asked us to follow through, and we developed these ordinances. So Chief, thank you for being here. And remind us what we've gotten.
Yeah, thank you again for having me back. And we're talking about three different ordinances, but they all land in Section Six of our city code. First one is to add clear authority and clarity for painted curb parking prohibitions throughout the city to ensure that designated fire lanes and no parking areas are, that are obstructed by vehicles can be cited. The second one is to establish rules and restrictions for the parking of portable storage containers, or pod containers, and temporary storage containers on western city streets and other rights of way to increase vehicular and pedestrian safety and to shore, shore up current parking prohibition in residential parking districts without a permit. And the third one is to ensure transparency of city parking violation fines by referring residents or others viewing the municipal code to the city of Westland Master Fees and Charges Document for one scheduling of parking fines. The first one is, we'll go over 1760. It's the painted curb prohibition. We did not have the authority to, to cite anybody with just a curb being painted if it did not have a sign that accompanied it. And we have now changed that. We, we recommend that to be changed, that we can enforce it just with the painted curb without the sign next to it. So that parking, stopping, and standing, any part of the vehicle on our curb that is painted red or yellow by a city official or designee is prohibited. No additional marking such as a sign is required to establish a no parking, stopping, or standing zone. Was that 1760? So, do you want to do these one at a time?
Let's take questions on 1760, and then we can move on. Questions, comments? The question I have is what I asked back in May, which is, are we have, is there a process through this Public Works or GIS department to make sure we have an inventory of the curbs, the colors in the city? Just to make sure, because, because the code language says curb painted by a city official. So just trying to make sure that we can track that.
The city does have a schedule of where all their painted curbs occur.
And then, thank you for that. And then, at the last meeting, a member of the public brought up some of the curbs are, the paint is degrading to the point where it's not clear that the curbs are actually painted yellow, but they are. So I don't know if we can go out and take this time to shore that up. That could be helpful just to, so everybody knows. I'm thinking of especially near the high school. I've seen a couple of spots like that.
So the, the curbs are on a schedule to be repainted every so many years. We just went through this at the Cedar Oak Boat Ramp, where some curbs had to be redone. If one was degrading quicker than the others, we could certainly address that as we cite and as we look at the area.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other questions on 1760? Did I cover everybody's thoughts? Okay. Okay, I see no other questions or comments on ordinance 1760. And now we'll move to 1761.
This is in response to a community complaint about a commonly referred to as a pod, a storage, temporary storage container, container being parked on the street in the public right of way for a very long time. And so this, our current code was not up to, did not address this issue in any way she performs. So we have expanded it to include dumpsters and portable storage containers like pods. We took out the word pods because that's a specific company we wanted to apply to all of them. And it's specifically in Section Six of, of that ordinance, and it's a portable storage container of any type or moving or storage container of any size upon a residential public street for a period longer than 72 hours, except with a valid permit issued by the city of Westland Public Works Department or designee. In no event shall the portable storage container or any type of moving or storage container be placed in a manner that interferes with traffic or creates a hazard by obstructing the view of drivers. Any questions on 1761?
Any questions? Thank you for the overview. Counsel President, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Police Chief Mahuna. I wonder if, just kind of for my own curiosity and anyone paying attention to this meeting right now, if they were to, well, I guess if they're paying attention to the meeting, they won't be unaware. But if someone was unaware of this, would they get a warning maybe and then be able to go, obtain a permit for a container temporarily placed near their home for a purpose?
Yeah, so as, as you know, we are complaint driven. So when we get a complaint of a pod or a storage container that was out there too long, we would, code enforcement or a police officer would go contact them and say, you know, you have this many days to move it or get a permit if you haven't already gotten one. And then we would, we could drop a citation after that.
Thank you. So kind of the education. So kind of the education before enforcement. Thank you.
That is my preference on all of these things.
I appreciate that.
Educate first and then cite second.
Thank you so much.
Great question. Thank you. Anything else? 1761. This is an example of the council responding to requests from the community when good ideas come up. Appreciate that. Go ahead, on to 1762, parking violations.
So this is, we had the, we always had the authority to cite in the parking district. The problem was that we realized that the fine, the fee schedule was not in line with what the intention of that is. So in our municipal code, it clearly said that if it's an unclassified violation, it will be treated as a Class B violation and fined as such. That fine for students parking in that zone would have been $265 a day. We did not think that that was inappropriate. I do not think that that was an appropriate fine for high school students trying to park to go to school. And so, and I think the council had given direction about a $30 fine. And so in order to have that fine be more applicable here, to be applicable here in all, we needed to amend the code. So what we've done is we've included this language in here so that we can direct residents to the master fees and schedule that tells them what the fine schedule is for the city codes. And so that's what we've done here. And it just says that a violation of Section 6.100 to 6.140, shall be subject to monetary fines as specified in a schedule of fees adopted by resolution of the city council. So it just adds transparency to us, and I think it's better for the community to know what they're doing.
Appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Councillor President Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mayor. I wonder about what the rate of an issue this still is about parking, is it, is it a regular, is it a daily occurrence? Is it a significant number of vehicles still are seeking to park in an area that they are not allowed?
Yes, we get, we get calls daily. The patrol, the, our code enforcement, our community service officer goes through there every day, school day, I'm sorry, school days, schools in, and issues either citations or warnings, yes.
Okay. Well, I feel like this is an opportunity that maybe we should discuss further, that there's an opportunity to improve the system here instead of just continually citing students who are trying to go to school. So, and I don't know if it would be a conversation we'd need to have with, partner with the school district about finding out the numbers and then seek to solve this problem. It just, it seems like something that needs to be addressed rather than kind of continuing down the road in this broken way. So thank you for bringing that up.
We have discussed the impacts of raising the fine a little bit. There's still a very vocal community of residents that live there that are being impacted by the students that are parking there for sure, and that's a, that's certainly a legitimate argument or to be brought to the discussion. And we're open to the great ideas that the community or the council would have to help solve this problem for us.
Great. I'd love to address that.
Is it easy to see the data on like calls? Like, is that something that's logged? She seems to be asking for some statistics.
So the short answer is yes, we could pull out all the parking complaints along the high school area from the, from the call logs, if you will. But if there's one or 10 cars that are out of compliance, there's going to be one call. And when the, when the officer gets there, they may cite 10 vehicles all in a row. So we would have to, I could give you the number of calls, but I can tell you that the number of cars that were improperly parked is much higher than the number of calls, if that makes sense. So it would be hard for us to capture how many people are out of compliance.
Okay. Well, that would be, I mean, I don't know if it would be important to know the exact number, maybe not. Just that it's still a significant issue is mainly what I'm thinking about, that we need to address. We shouldn't just continue to go along. I also have a personal issue with having noticed that a lot of parents still park in bike lanes at pickup time and near crosswalks, which I think are really dangerous practices. So I'm, I'm just thinking as a city, we should work with the school district to improve safety and facilitate parking, which I understand both the residents in the neighborhood's point of view, absolutely, having worked at the high school myself. And I know sometimes students can be not as conscious and aware of their impact on other people, but also from the student's point of view that they need to sometimes not be able to take the bus and because of their schedules, and so they need a place to park to get to school. So I think we should continue this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor President. Councillor Groner has a question, comment.
Yes, thank you. I am hoping that there is some sort of communication program involving the school service officer before the students so they are made aware of the parking rules and warned about potential citations.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And when they're first enrolled in school and they have their orientation, our SRO speaks to the students. This is one of the topics that comes up with staff, emails going out to parents every year.
Thank you.
Councillor Bright, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to bring up, we got an email from a resident that was talking about parking near mailboxes, and that is a concern. One way we could deal with that is maybe put paint on curbs by mailboxes, which would then prohibit people from parking there. We also have many, many streets with mailboxes that don't have curbs and sidewalks, so I'm not sure how we would necessarily address that. I do know I had some neighbors for a while that would put their garbage cans out on Monday and not bring them back in until Thursday, and our mail carrier would give them notes and everything, and, but it was a recurring problem. So I'm not sure what we would do in places where there are no curbs, but if we could put yellow paint on curbs that are surrounding mailboxes, that might help that situation.
I too got that email from that concerned resident. I was unaware that that was a problem before that email showed up. It's going to present some challenges for us, just like the school district does for enforcement on a routine basis, and that would be all over the city, not just in the school, in that parking district area. So we would love to have a seat at that table when those, when those discussions are going on.
We can maybe put that on a future, discuss an agenda, agenda for a meeting so we can talk about that.
Yeah, that would be good.
It just does, it's not lost to me that through this all, through all of this, we only have one community service officer to handle all these sorts of issues. Just appreciate all she does, but this is a lot to handle. Okay. Any other comments on 1762? Okay. Well, then we can move into motions. So this is going to be, assuming things pass unanimously, we're going to have six straight motions here, just for every, just for everybody listening. This is going to be the procedural part of the meeting, because we've got to vote on each ordinance individually twice. So for 1760, would somebody like to make a motion for the first reading?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading for ordinance 1760, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to painted curb parking prohibition, and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the first reading for ordinance 1760, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to painted curb parking prohibitions, and setting the matter for second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Councillor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. So the motion passes unanimously, so now we will move to the second reading for 1760.
I move to approve second reading for ordinance 1760, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to painted curb parking prohibition, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading for ordinance 1760, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to painted curb parking prohibitions, and adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? No discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. So 1760 is adopted. Thank you, everybody. Onto 1761.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading for ordinance 1761, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to portable storage, moving containers, and vehicles in residential parking zones, and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading for ordinance 1761, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to portable storage, moving containers, and vehicles in residential parking zones, and set the matter for second reading. Any discussion from the council? No? Okay. Please call the roll.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. So second reading, please.
I move to approve second reading for ordinance 1761, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to portable storage, moving containers, and vehicles in residential parking zones, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the second reading for ordinance 1761, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to portable storage and moving containers and vehicles in residential parking zones, and adopt the ordinance. No discussion, so please call the roll.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. Thank you. So ordinance 1761 is approved. And now the final ordinance of the night, ordinance 1762.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading for ordinance 1762, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to fines for parking violations, and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve the first reading for ordinance 1762, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to fines for parking violations, and set the matter for second reading. No discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. And now, so the first reading is approved, and we can now move to the second reading.
I move to approve second reading for ordinance 1762, amending West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, relating to fines for parking violations, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading for ordinance 1762, amending the West Lynn Municipal Code, Chapter 6, related to fines for parking violations, and adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? No discussion again? Wow. Okay, please call the roll.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. So on the sixth, on the sixth motion of the day for related to ordinances, ordinance 1762 is adopted. For those who don't know, it's complicated for the city recorder because she has to rotate the names of the, of the, of the council every time by the council rules, and she did a great job. Thank you for that. So, thank you, Chief, for the work on the ordinances. Thank you, Kathy, for getting us through the rolls, the calls there. And we'll continue on. So, next is the construction manager and general contractor services for the operations complex, Phase 1 pre-construction services, and this is Agenda Bill 2025-06-1603. And this is very exciting, the Public Works Operations Center coming right, coming right along.
Very exciting. Mayor and council, thank you, and thank you for approving all of those ordinances. That will definitely help our police department enforce on those community issues, and thank you for approving it six times. We set up three different ordinances just so that you would have to do that. I'm a little disappointed that you didn't have any difficult legal questions for contract city attorney here tonight, but maybe on this next agenda item, we will see. As you said, this next item is very exciting. This is the major milestone on a project that has extended for many, many months now as we've been working towards replacement of the city's outdated operations center on Norfolk Street with a new facility on Salama Road. Eric is here to present you with this, with this next step. And although Morgan isn't up at the table, we definitely want to recognize Morgan's work on this project. I'm sure Eric will do the same thing, but absolutely essential to getting this done on a project of this scale. So Eric, thank you for being here, and can you please explain what we're doing this evening?
Mayor, councilors, thanks for having me tonight. As we said, we're excited to be one step closer to our building construction of the new operations complex. So tonight, we're here for the award hopefully of the contract manager, general contractor contract for Skanska USA. Little bit of background for you, it's also in the agenda packet, but I have a few other notes as well to go through here briefly. So as you may recall, March 17, we brought to city council for review and approval of the use of city's local contracting rules to use the construction manager, general contracting delivery method. That's not something that we typically have used since I've been here on, on our projects. That delivery method will provide enhanced coordination with the design teams, subcontractors, and public agencies throughout the design process. The CMGC and identified trade partners are brought in early to help with the design and perform constructability reviews early in the process. After that, we brought, we issued an RFP for construction solicitation. The RFP was posted on the state's procurement website called Oregon Buys. It was also advertised in the Daily Journal of Commerce, West Lynn Tidings, Business Tribune, and the city's website. That bid closed on April 24, and we were happy to have 14 very well-qualified contractors that were interested in our project. Through a thorough evaluation process with our city, city staff from engineering, public works, and parks, we narrowed that down to a short list of six candidates. On May 19, we had interviews, and again, these were all very well-qualified firms that the evaluation and the interview process was quite difficult at times. But, so with the combined scores from the original proposal of the RFP, along with the interviews, Skanska USA Buildings Incorporated was our top candidate. And just as a little bit of background on how well-qualified and what substantial experience they have, I stumbled onto, we subscribe to E&amp;R, Engineering News Record, and they frequently have top 500 engineering firms, 500 contractors. And I got the recent magazine last week, and they were listed as the, out of the top 400 from this publication, they were listed as the 12th. And there's various categories, but I thought that was very exciting. And within the USA, they're listed as 8.2 billion from 2024 in revenue. So huge projects, airports, bridges, railroad tunnels, you name it, they can do it. So we're really excited to have a contractor of this level of expertise on, on site, again, proven track record of delivering complex projects, working occupied campuses. I believe they're working on an OHSU expansion right now, airport, local knowledge with global and national resources. We're excited that I believe two or three of the team partners, team members are local residents, so they're going to have our best interests in mind. They're recognized as a leader in sustainable construction. We've talked about in a previous meeting with the work session of Sustainability Advisory Group about the sustainability and a proposal for mass plywood construction and CLT. They have a structural engineer just on board for that type of work, so we're really excited about that. But anyway, super excited. about that. But anyway, super excited to have this contract before you tonight. I do want to note this project is phasing. If you notice in the agenda report, it's for ninety-eight thousand. That's for the preliminary design. To get that to completion, we will be back at a later time for the award of the construction piece of it. Once we have our G M P guaranteed max price worked out with Skanska, and so we'll be back for that, which will be a quite a bit larger amount. But, so, happy to get this first phase underway, and I'm happy to quit rambling and ask, answer any questions if you might have any.
So, you're saying we can't get the building built for ninety-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Dang.
I wish.
Thank you for the great presentation. Council Groner, please sit. And then we'll get our line.
Yes, I was reading the contract and basically very confused. It seems there are a lot of blanks in the contract, a lot of T B Ds, and remarkably few numbers or dates in the contract. The only real set of numbers I saw were some, some billing rates for various individuals in the consulting firm. So, can you?
So, I am going to pull the audience and bring Morgan up here because she has the, the contract knowledge. My understanding is that what we have is, it's a template through the American Institute of Architects that we must use. And that part has been in review with legal, and it's a final draft at this time unless there is questions or comments related to this meeting tonight.
So, to clarify some of those points, some things are T B D because they are dependent on construction schedules. So, this is a master draft preconstruction phase. The American Institute of Architects is the standard template that we were guided to use by legal counsel. It is the standard that is used for these large construction, complex projects that integrate design, architecture, engineering, and physical building construction. Typically, what you see are templates in front of you that are designed, not designed, but created and drafted by our own legal attorneys. We own those templates. We do not own the A I A template. So, what's before you is the draft that gives you the outline conditions and legal terms that were negotiated with our legal team, Kaylee Klein and Mac Mahoney from B E H, as well as Skanska. So, those are all the legal terms that have been agreed upon, and that draft was also included in the RFP that was released. Once that is approved, it goes to A I A, who owns the template, and they create the final draft for signature. The reason it's done this way is because while we are not members of A I A and don't have access to that portal, our owners reps do, and it costs money to upload it and get the final draft. So, rather than pay for it, bring a final draft to you, perhaps have some back and forth. You ask for something to be changed, then we have to pay for it twice. So, that's why it's in this format. It was discussed with legal counsel ahead of time. It's a different process for us. And some of those T B Ds are because they will be amended through the G M P amendment once construction is outlined, once we have a construction start date, once we have a G M P maximum price, what we know certain labor are going to cost. So, right now, what we have are the labor rates of the project team related to preconstruction services only. And if legal has anything to pipe in and, and add, I'm happy to hear them as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Chad Jacobs, Special Legal Counsel. I think that summary was exactly right. I think the key here is that this is a C M G C contract, which means that everyone is working together throughout the entire process. And so, until you get that guaranteed maximum price, you only have the preliminary work that's part of the contract. And then, once you get the guaranteed maximum price and everything else, we'll come back to you with a contract amendment, and you'll be asked to approve a contract amendment, which will then fill in all those blanks. But for now, we're only focused on the preconstruction services, which is really like the preliminary design work. And so, that's what the contract is outlining right now.
Thank you. One follow-up question. The, do you want to define for me or explain what the guaranteed minimum price and guaranteed maximum price, what the scope of those two prices cover?
So, the guaranteed maximum price is the scope of the entire construction. That is, that is all the excavation, that is the vertical build, that is the road, that is everything that the contractor will take care of. That is the final delivered product to the city. Part of the C M G C process is that they are here from the beginning, working through our final design, design phase. So, they're doing constructibility review. They're helping us get to a final design where they do their own cost estimating as the builder and tell us what we can build for what price. So, when we have that final design, they say, we know we can build it for X, and that becomes our guaranteed maximum price. They cannot go over that budget. It moves some of the risk on to them to make sure that they don't inflate prices and make sure that they build on time because time is money for the builder, for all of us. So, it helps share risk from the city and the contractor to build on time and within budget. It also allows them to leverage resources early and to get long lead items that can impact our construction timeline and building. So, that's kind of where the, the G M P comes in, which is different than a design bid build project, which you might see on a road project. We have a design, someone goes and bids on it. But sometimes there's unknowns because the contractor wasn't there doing the quoring, and then they'll, they'll find out we need something adjusted. We might need more quantity. Maybe our subsurface isn't what we thought. And that can create change orders. This process reduces the risk of change orders and unknowns throughout the process.
And the guaranteed minimum price, do you want to explain what that means, the scope of it?
Well, right now, we have a range of what is estimated through our third-party cost estimators. So, there's a broad range. Right now, we have a firm budget of thirty-five million all in, and so that will be what we will work towards with our G M P. And that will, that might require value engineering. They might come back and say, you know, it's looking a little bit higher. And then we'll have to go back with the design firm to adjust things. It might be giving up some things. We don't know what that's going to look like until we get further along in the design process. Right now, the range that we've been looking at is twenty-five to thirty-five million.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, counselor. Council Bright, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Really exciting that we got so many bids on this project. It's a, it's a very exciting and interesting project. The C M G C is a really great delivery method to put in on something that is this complex and has this many moving parts. I've been involved in a previous life with, with a project that was handled this way. So, I think that's really great. This, what we're asked, being asked to approve tonight is the preconstruction part, and that's where they will go look at the designs and start pricing everything out. And then you'll come back to us with the contract for the total.
That is correct. The ninety-eight thousand is for preconstruction services, and that is it.
When you did interviews, was there talk of the G, the G M P during, like, it's an interesting process that you pick it, and I'm not criticizing the process. You pick a firm before you know the G M P.
There was discussion. So, you know, part of the design or the bid package, the RFP, is they were given our preliminary drawings. They do have some ideas about things. And they came back in and, and no, no one at this point can give us a firm G M P. They were given a range that we anticipate through our third-party estimator, and the majority of the firms came back and said they believed it was doable. And part of the exciting thing about C M G C is they have such a wealth of knowledge that they can come in and say, you have excavation or the road designed this way with this feature. We believe it can be done in this way and could save this amount of money. It's about building things in a cost-efficient way that's going to maximize the budget and be the most efficient. We got a lot of good feedback on a lot of different strategies and ideas from all of the contractors. And Skanska is extremely knowledgeable, and they have a very, very good earthwork partner.
We actually got comments on our, the ability of the, the estimators to come within target. I think multiple candidates mentioned that they thought the estimate was right on, right on target, so.
It's good to hear. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Jacobs, are you comfortable with the, we've got to ask you a question tonight. Are you comfortable with the contract?
The contract looks great. Thank you, Mayor. And I liked how it provided kind of an off-ramp for the city, at least at this phase, just, just in the event of some sort of issue. So, you can terminate it anytime. Not that that's going to happen. Okay. Well, I would, if we're ready, I'd entertain a motion to approve, and this is the, for ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the contract as the standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager as constructor and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in the amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars awarded to Skanska USA Buildings, Inc., for the preconstruction phase of the city's operations complex construction project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract as a standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager as constructor and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in the amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars awarded to Skanska USA Buildings, Inc., for the preconstruction phase of the city's operations complex construction project. Any discussion? I also was excited by the amount of bidders, and I'm glad that we have such a qualified firm to take us through the next phase on this project. Very exciting and, and very needed. I just reiterate to the public that, you know, many of us have been to the current operations center, and it is not a good, not a good place for city work to be going on, and we need a new place to be able to have, respond to winter weather events, take care of our roads, all, all the things that our parks and streets departments do for the city. And so, just want to reiterate that, and I'm sure we'll have more information for the public and maybe even a video or something of that sort as we move forward to kind of highlight the need as to why we're doing it. Council President Baumgartner, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to note and recognize the work of Morgan Levell for, throughout this whole project, because I am a person who doesn't have experience in this area, and just being able to hear and the detail and learn about the project and what it entails is very helpful for us to be able to make these important decisions. So, I wanted to thank you for your work, and of course, Director Leis also for your work too. And we really appreciated having a tour of the site. That's also very helpful just to kind of help us understand what's going to be required for this project. So, I appreciate that.
I echo those comments wholeheartedly. Thank you. Anything else from discussion points? Okay, please call the roll.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealstaski?
Yes. Thank you. So, the motion is approved, and the contract is authorized to be signed. So, would we like to just quickly clarify what the next steps are, just for the record?
So, now that it's been approved by council, we will be working with our owners rep, Klosch. They will be uploading the draft to be, into the A I A portal to get us the final non-draft version, which will be then provided to our city manager for his signature as well as Skanska's, and then it'll be fully executed. And we have a kickoff meeting that was tentatively planned for next week, assuming council approval tonight.
And then, would, the guaranteed maximum price be brought back to the council for a review in the near future?
Yes, that is an amendment that is outlined in the contract. So, no construction will move forward until the G M P has been brought to you and approved by council. And, and between now and then, you will, I'm sure, get some design updates, and we won't just be bringing back a G M P to you without additional work sessions and information.
We're, we're also just getting started. The land use application hopefully will be submitted for, in the next week or so. So, we're just starting that process as well. So, lots of, lots of opportunity for public comment and feedback.
And just to note, last Monday, we also held our first public meeting as part of the land use process and invited Will Lam at Neighborhood Association Savannah Oaks and Barrington Heights. So, we did a presentation to all three of those neighborhood associations, along with our architects, to provide an update and make sure that they were thoroughly informed of what's going to be happening in our community and that this council would be reviewing the preconstruction contract this evening.
Thank you for those awesome updates. The council president.
How was the, how was the turnout for the community meeting?
We had, what, one from each neighborhood association, maybe two. And then there was two, three residents from Barrington.
So, not a huge turnout, but a representational turnout. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that. I know the community appreciates that kind of outreach.
Yeah.
John, any final thoughts?
Oh, we're just very excited and looking forward to this moving along and coming back. Any thoughts on timeline before we're back with the amendment for the final construction?
I was gonna, I think we need to have some further discussion internally on that. I'm not sure if that would, we need to get all the way through land use prior to having all those pieces in place. So, it'll be a few months. There's talk too that is part of the, RFP was layout your construction schedule. And we may have talked about this on our, on our site visit, but when to start, some of them wanted an early start, some of them wanted a later. We're looking at, and we'll know more next week when we do meet with Skanska. But they're proposing, rather than go through two winters, maybe just ease up and start in the spring with construction, give us more time to get the final design, all the negotiation, scope and fee, and then land use as well. So, still up in the air on when, when we're officially going to break ground, but we still have a lot of work to do.
Thank you. We'll be in touch, sounds like.
And also, if anybody wants another look, we are going to go down tomorrow morning with the other department heads. If you want to join in, you're free to take another look.
Count me in.
Well, I'm moving right along to Agenda Item HC, which is a Sustainability Consultant Work Update.
Thank you, Mayor. Dylan Digby is here. He has been the one working with our consultant team and the Sustainability Advisory Board. This is really, in a way, kind of more of a work session item, but the calendar worked for us on this. And given that this is a city council priority for the next two years, we wanted to give it a little highlight. So, Dylan's going to explain what this little contract has been and what some of the recommended strategies moving forward are. Thank you, Dylan.
Yes, as John noted, this is the direct result as a, of a council goal for this year to, for the S A B to provide advice to council on high-end back projects with consultant assistance. And that's exactly what we did. We hired Parametrics, worked with the Sustainability Advisory Board, who's been assisting us with all this work to, to select this consultant. And we've been working with Parametrics, and Grace has been our lead worker, who's on the screen there, for the last nine months. They've reviewed all our sustainability plans, our Sustainable Westland Strategic Plan, several other plans, a lot of the work the S A B's doing, and kind of brought it all together to work on a, like, a focused plan, given our, like, budget, budgetary and staff limitations. So, we can work on the highest, most useful projects for sustainability. And I will leave it to Grace to, to explain how they prioritized and what they're recommending.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dylan. Thank you.
We can't hear you, Grace.
Can you hear me now?
Still no.
Okay. Hello, testing. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Testing, one, two, three.
No, can't hear you.
Okay, give me one second.
What's that? Yeah, it looks like you're unmuted, but you, sometimes if you go next to the mute, there's an arrow button, and you click that, and there's audio settings. You might need to pick a different audio source.
Can you hear me now?
You really loud.
You're so loud.
Can you hear me now? Testing, one, two, three, three. Can you hear me? Just speakers on my end, too, see if any work. So. Hello, testing, one, two, three.
Should we take?
Testing. Can you hear me now?
We're running ahead of schedule. Let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll get the audio issues figured out. So we'll just do that for five minutes. Take a break.
Testing, one, two, three.
Oh, God, right when I hit. Okay, never mind, everybody, we're going to keep going.
We got you now.
Then we're still streaming to the community, okay? We're going to reconvene the meeting.
My apologies, thank you so much for your patience, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time this evening for me to present. I'm happy to share the work that we have been doing with the city for the last nine months. I'm going to go ahead and share a quick presentation.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. All right, how does that look?
We can see it fine.
Perfect, excellent. So my name is Grace Thirkel with Parametrics. I'm a sustainability and climate consultant, and it's been a pleasure to work with Dylan in the City of Westland to look at some sustainability goals and priorities. This slide is an overview of our scope of work. So as Dylan mentioned, we reviewed all of the relevant sustainability plans and goals to recommend what we thought were the most realistic, feasible, and high-impact actions. We also researched and recommend some grants and potential other funding sources that Westland could qualify for or follow up on to try and increase capacity for sustainability initiatives, and met a couple of times with the Westland Sustainability Advisory Board. Are you all getting feedback? I'm hearing some audio feedback.
No, we're good on this end.
No, it sounds good.
All right, I'll continue onwards. So our intent with this scope of work was to come up with some recommendations to help the City of Westland prioritize and focus what could be the most impactful sustainability actions, given your current capacity and funding constraints, and think about what are some really strong next steps that the city could take, and to collaborate with the SAB in looking at those goals. So what we've been able to accomplish was creating the Recommended Sustainability and Climate Action Strategies Memo and Implementation Plan. That's part of the council packet tonight, and I'll walk through that in a little bit more detail in my presentation. We also drafted a Westland Green Fleet Purchasing Policy that would look at recommendations for purchasing electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles or other alternative fuel vehicles to reduce emissions and pollution from vehicles, and put together a Westland Sustainability Funding Strategy Memo. And then our last deliverable that we just shared with Dylan at the end of last week was a spreadsheet tracking some additional grants and funding opportunities that the city could continue to look at and potentially pursue in the future. And for that first recommended climate action strategies and implementation plan, we think this could be a really great kind of next one-to-four-year plan for the city as you're continuing to build capacity and additional funding for sustainability efforts. We know that there's been a lot of great work in this, in sustainability already in the past, but we wanted to help prioritize what could be some achievable next steps that you could do right now with current capacity. So as we mentioned, we reviewed 71 existing strategies from the previously done work and recommended eight priority strategies, including five for the city to focus on and three that are more community-wide strategies that the SAB and other community members and businesses could get involved in. And overall, our recommendations are focused on greenhouse gas mitigation strategies, so strategies that will reduce energy use or pollution and try and mitigate the impacts of climate change. And we also highlighted 10 priority strategies that Westland has already made great progress on. And I'll show those strategies here in a moment. Our strategies in the memo were prioritized based on these factors, so cost and staff capacity needed for implementation. Again, we wanted to focus on actions that we felt were most feasible to move forward on, funding and finance mechanisms available, alignment with council goals, the potential roles for the city and SAB members in order to forward the actions, sharing examples from peer communities of doing similar work, and then these climate and sustainability factors relating to greenhouse gas reduction potential and resiliency or adaptation benefits. And I'm happy to answer questions as we go or at the end, if you have any questions about these factors or climate strategies in general. So this slide highlights the completed and ongoing progress that we wanted to highlight as we were reviewing all of the different sustainability strategies. So these are 10 things that the city is already doing a great job working on. And perhaps I'll just pause for a moment and let you all read through the slide rather than reading all of the list directly. But I think my overall takeaway here is that the city is already finding a lot of great opportunities to incorporate sustainability into your existing projects and work, and there's lots of little ways to continue to do so in existing projects. I know it's being considered for this operational building that was the previous agenda item, and looking for partnership opportunities with utilities and other community partners. And then finally, I want to highlight the recommendations from our work. So the city operations strategies we recommend are these five things. First would be developing the Green Fleet Purchasing Policy. So like I shared, we drafted one for the city's review, and I think that's currently being reviewed by Public Works. And this would look at kind of the overall cost-benefit analysis of future purchases for vehicles. Also considering sustainability building features and equipment in the design and construction of the new Public Works and Operations Building. It's great to hear that mass timber and other sustainability features are already being considered there. And I think new buildings tend to be a really good opportunity to increase energy efficiency and sustainability. Completing LED lighting upgrades in all city facilities, and then seeking additional funding and prioritizing opportunities for public building, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades, and opportunities for solar or other renewable energy. And then, last but not least, evaluating opportunities to establish ongoing sustainability funding without diminishing the city's ability to deliver essential services. And I think this one is particularly helpful as kind of a stepping stone for thinking about the rest of the great sustainability actions that are in the sustainability plan and the SAB's goals, because we recognize that some of these things take time and effort and money to do. And so if the city can focus on kind of prioritizing, looking at funding and building capacity, that could be really helpful for next steps. And then finally, we have three recommended community-wide strategies, which are working with local businesses and developers to encourage the use of installing electric vehicle charging, and I believe this is already underway. Increasing opportunities for community members and businesses to reduce waste by sharing and repurposing unwanted products, and creating and distributing a directory with repair services in Westland. So these last two are more focused on helping community members reduce their waste and buy fewer new goods, whereas the city's strategies are really more focused on energy efficiency and reducing the energy used and overall kind of emissions from city operations. So with that, I really appreciate your time. It's been a pleasure working with the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you for that very detailed presentation and all of your work. Counsel, I'll let counsel process it. I'll ask a quick question, which is, has this been to the Sustainability Advisory Board? I'm guessing they've been engaged throughout the process, and what's their reaction?
Yeah, it's been very positive. I think they've really appreciated Grace's expertise, and she's met with them a couple of times and incorporated their feedback into all the work she's done, yeah. Anything else to add there, Grace?
No, the Sustainability Advisory Board is a group to work with. They're very passionate and have a lot of priorities as well, and I think we've been working together to try and emphasize some of these specific top priorities to focus on as next steps, knowing that it's not everything the Sustainability Advisory Board would like to do or the city would like to do, but it's helpful to start somewhere and build on that success.
Yeah, and since the memo was made, the SAB's talked about it a couple of times and how to move some of the things forward and where we are on some of the items. So yeah, they're all in on it.
That's great to hear. Council President, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for this wonderful, detailed listing of opportunities that we can improve our sustainability practices. I have particular interest in some of the lighting changes, and I recently observed that some removal of vegetation that coincided with new streetlights has caused an impact of light coming into a park that was relied on by a lot of wildlife that I think uses the darkness, especially nocturnal animals. And so I'm curious about opportunities, not just to change lighting type, but color, if you know anything about that, those kind of improvements that can happen. Also, I just kind of generally wonder, from your experience working with cities, and this is a big list, and obviously, we can't do it all. Do you have any input or advice about generally kind of what seems to get the most bang for your buck and be the easiest, quickly to make a big difference in implementation of these various practices?
Yeah, let me start with addressing the lighting question. Thank you for these questions. We were really focusing on what are opportunities to improve energy efficiency or kind of reduce those climate impacts. I'm not an expert on dark spaces or the ecological function of some of those trade-offs. I think it is really helpful to keep in mind and work with folks that specialize in those technologies as you're thinking about implementation. But that is a really important highlight of sustainability more broadly, is there are a lot of different kind of parallel, but sometimes conflicting, goals or benefits that we can look at. And so part of our focusing here was really focused on climate mitigation strategies and mostly things that reduce energy use. In terms of what is most effective and where to start, it's not the easiest answer, but I really think that increasing staff capacity to have more overall support and time for these projects is probably going to be the most beneficial over the long term. But I think in the short term, identifying one or two of the smaller funding opportunities, like continuing to partner with Energy Trust of Oregon on some of their incentives, or looking at some of the smaller grant opportunities to look at smaller projects that are easier to incorporate into existing operations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
In relation to the indirect light thing, if there is a specific location, I know there is shielding, and I know in the past, Public Works can install shielding to block light, usually to other people's houses, but also to a park. We need to, so we could talk about that.
Thank you.
Great question and great answer, with a lot of good insight in there. Counsel Bonnington, please.
I am really happy to see that last one about a directory of repair services. I think we can all acknowledge that we buy too much junk, and it's not really made to be repaired very often these days. And even if it is, we don't do a great job of it, and that's a huge waste. So I know there's not a right-to-repair bill, because that already got passed last year, but maybe a repair fair in addition to this. I know some cities have those, where people come with their broken stuff, and experts are there to help fix it. I would certainly help.
You know, Robinwood does that.
They do.
Yes, annual basis, yeah.
Didn't know that, yeah.
Counsel Bright, please.
Yes, the Robinwood Station does do at least two repair fairs a year. We coordinate it with Clackamas County, who many of the people at Robinwood would like to do them more frequently, and the county's concerned about overwhelming the repairers. But we're always welcoming, you know, welcoming new people to come in and repair. I know typically, they weigh the amount of stuff that they are able to fix that then doesn't go into the landfill. And, you know, it's like no gasoline motors, but it's, you know, bicycles, lamps, sewing machines, mixers, a lot of things like that that are repaired at the repair fairs. And the city very graciously posts that information on the website. So when there's one coming up, it's on the city's website.
Thank you, Counsel Bright. Counsel Groner, please.
Yes, thank you. One of the parts of the environment that I think are very important is the night sky and the stars, and keeping lighting pointing down and not obliterating that part of an environment, I think, is an important consideration.
Thank you, good suggestion. My question is related to EV charging, and I've been working myself on trying to increase the amount of charges in Westland with the private sector. I wonder if you have any guidance or success stories from how to kind of incentivize private landholders? Because we have a few of them in Westland that owns our commercial shopping centers, you know. What has, have you seen things that have worked in other communities to kind of help incentivize those to be put in? Because we only have a couple of them, and they're only provided by the city right now, not our private.
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you. I think, I don't, I'm not very familiar with Westland's existing codes, but I have seen some success with changes or flexibility in code in terms of where it may be charged or might be placed, or if there's a possibility to lower a system development fee or any of those other kind of development fees that a city might levy that would allow a developer or a private business to build something with a reduced cost, so it wouldn't necessarily be an upfront cost to the city, but perhaps slightly less revenue. So that could be something to explore. Otherwise, I think doing specific outreach to businesses like hotels or business centers where they get a lot of traffic, and sharing information about existing incentives and funding opportunities, which I know this might not be the most ideal time for, given federal policy changes around electric vehicles, but I think Oregon as a state is still committed, and Oregon Department of Energy still might have some good incentives.
Awesome. Thank you. If you think of anything, send it along. Any resources on that? Any other questions or comments? I suppose we'll take this under advisement and can, we'll work with staff and strategize on how to prioritize implementation. Maybe this is another future topic as we have time to digest this, and maybe a joint meeting with the Sustainability Advisory Board even, but how to move the ball on some of these things. Counsel Groner, please.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate the report. It occurs to me that one of, some of the discussions in the SAB involved something like a dashboard for the city to report on current greenhouse gas emissions by the city and how we're improving, how that's changing over time. I'm wondering, is that still under consideration?
I know that they've done, SAB members have done like a baseline energy audit, like gas, electric in the past, and I think they're working on that again this year. So I think it's happening, yes. I think there's a records request in now. Yes?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on the sustainability work update from the council? Please, Council President, last comment.
I just wanted to thank the Sustainability Advisory Board and Dylan and Ms. Thirkel for your work on this. It's very important.
Appreciate that. And we will definitely keep the report at the top of our mind as we move forward and schedule maybe at the next joint meeting of the SAB and City Council, we could talk about it. I think that'd be a good idea to discuss. With that, thank you, Dylan, for all your work, and we will move on. Onto the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your work, as always, on a variety of topics tonight. Next week is all budget. Special meeting on June 23rd. We'll have an agency meeting and a council meeting, and scheduled to adopt the budgets of both of those organizations and all the related matter, the public hearing on the revenue sharing, the master fees and charges, the community grants. All of those pieces will be on your agenda next Monday. Following that, the next meeting would be on July 7th. That'll be the first Monday of July for a work session, and that's the one where we discuss talking about the city's long range. long-range needs and opportunities and how we might go about a conversation on funding those. So we're looking forward to that discussion very much. Other calendar notes, just a reminder that Juneteenth follows this Thursday. The city will be closed for that. And the, also a reminder, the following week, Tricia Brand will be speaking on Opal Lee and the early days of Juneteenth. That's the 26th, I believe, at 6:30. So that, that's definitely an event to, to attend. This Friday, on a different note, Pollinator Celebration at Maryas Young, 4 to 7. Hopefully it doesn't rain. I haven't looked at my forecast. And a lot of volunteer opportunities in parks this weekend. Maddox, I think, has one. Willamette has one. Palomino Trail, Palomino has one. So a lot of opportunities to get out in the community and volunteer. Think we continue to track all of the items that you've asked us to bring back. We added one this evening related to parking and mailboxes. We'll take a look at that one. And I promise to make sure that Chief Moon is, attends it, since he offered to attend it. And with that, I think that's all I have for you tonight on our city manager report, unless you have any questions for me. And opportunity for city attorney report.
I was gonna, I was, you know what? I was actually thinking about that.
Excellent.
Mr. Chad Jacobs, welcome back to the council chamber.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here. My report is, you have a wonderful city attorney. She's doing an amazing job, and it's a true pleasure to work with her. And I look forward to her returning from vacation refreshed.
We appreciate all that your firm has done to help with the backlog of issues that have come up over the last few months, helping with onboarding and everything like that for Kaylee. And we look forward to Kaylee returning. Hopefully, she's not watching this meeting and she's having a nice vacation. You know, I just have one item to bring up with the council, which is the legislative session. Obviously, it's continuing to go on and coming towards the end here when they're going to adjourn in the next week or two. So I'm imagining some significant votes coming up on, and information coming out related to funding requests. I know the Willamette Falls Locks has a funding request. Willamette Falls Trust has some funding requests. So, and then there's the transportation investment package that's been hotly debated over the last few weeks in the media. And all of those are of significance to the city. And we'll just keep everybody updated on, on what we're hearing with, with that, those two things. I texted with our lobbyists this morning, and there were no updates on the funding issues related to the locks and the trust yet. So it's kind of an interesting process to see how these things all of a sudden come out at the end, and then everybody finds out who gets funded. So we'll see what happens whenever the list drops of projects and see if the transportation package can pass. So that's, that's it for me. Anything else for the good of the order from the council? Counsel President, please.
So I just wanted to notice people on some interesting upcoming events. I touched on earlier, the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition website has some fun events. There's a history, a regional history book club, and their first meeting is tomorrow night. But there will be another meeting next month. And so a person could go to their website and find out more detail on that. And I don't know if we have links from our city website, or if that's possible to add. There's also, this is really fun. There's an ongoing photo contest that it's called the John Klatt Memorial Photo Contest, because a, a person who has contributed to photo, old photo conservation and has quite a collection that the Heritage Area Coalition kind of curates and is, is in, can be contacted to purchase prints of the photos. They've offered to have a photo contest where you can reenact an old photo of your choosing and then submit your photo for their photo contest, which I know the submissions are due in September, so you have time. So a person could go again on the website for the coalition and find this information. Next Thursday is the Yakima Nation Lamprey Festival at Clackamette Park from 11 to 3, and it's a great opportunity to have an indigenous cultural experience right here in our own backyard. Sometimes it's quite a, a drive to some of the reservations to have powwows and sea dancing and other culture aspects. So you don't have to go that far. You can go to Clackamette Park on Thursday from 11 to 3 and sample some lamprey and salmon and maybe even go on a tour. They're hosting boat tours from the John Storm Marina over in Oregon City up to the falls. And it's always very interesting to hear, there's elders that are on the boat telling stories, and it's really fascinating. So I just wanted to elevate those two activities.
Appreciate that. I had a great time in years past at the Lamprey Festival.
And there may be a lamprey walking around.
I'll only go if you're in the costume. No, I'll go anyway. I look forward to it. Thank you, Counsel President. Anything else from council? Okay. We are going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.